What I'd like to do is start by doing the approval of the minutes. There's just one cabinet member here for one for, uh, for, um, the 25th of November.
I was here for that.
Yeah. And I've read, and you can have a chance to read it.
Yeah, I know.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the, what was it, November?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth of minutes.
Excellent. On favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, don't you. Um, do we have, do we have Matt on?
Yes, we do have him. Um, I just, Matt, can you, uh, can you hear us? I, I, we can't hear you. He is there.
I think they should have a screen in here so we can see people. Uh, and this is bad.
Matt, can you? Matt, it says you're connecting to the audio. I think he's trying to connect through, so let's see what happens here.
Okay, well, you know, we've, uh, I've read through the meeting of the minutes of the last meeting, the 27th. I don't know if we need to have an ad to approve, but it would be good to have it on to do so.
It says he's connecting to the audio, so. I, I know people have been having trouble with this. I think it's, like I said, a two-step process, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Simmons, do you have any issues with the minutes?
I think, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the seven minutes.
Jim, uh, Matt said that he's waiting for you to let him in.
Um, I have him unmuted, so.
He's on the phone. The 788 phone number is him.
Oh, 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 okay. All right, I didn't realize that. Okay, if he unmutes his, uh, Matt, if you unmute yourself now through the, uh, 888, it's mute your end. If you can let know that, Trish, I have him unmuted. So I asked him to unmute.
He can hear you, I guess, but, um.
Yeah, I know, this is frustrating when you're not positioned. I, I don't know what the steps are to.
There isn't something there, uh, here that you can.
Yeah, I, I already did that. I can unmute him and unmute him. I unmuted him, so now he should be able to. He just got unmuted at his end. I say that like I'm. Like that's easy.
So he can be very frustrated.
Must have one more step at his end.
You have lots of paperwork, buddy. Some of this is a little bit time-pressed, isn't it?
Matt, can you hear us yet?
More from the planning board, actually.
Hmm, yeah.
I have it all unmuted in my, so.
This is more detail on.
Cause we had problems last night, people with, uh, or Monday night with the planning board meeting, people getting in.
Not that I know much about it, Jim, but on my computer, if I right-click on the screen, it'll bring up, uh, selections that include the audio and, and that could be muted.
Okay, so you hear that, Matt? Uh, right-click on your screen and see if you can unmute that way. Well, he, uh, Matt, Matt wrote in, he said, please continue and I'll chime in if, he'll, he'll chime in if he can.
Okay.
He's gonna continue to try.
Well, we basically have agreed, we, the folks who were here at the last meeting, myself and, uh, Justin and Scott, we don't have any problems with the minutes. So we can approve that. Minutes for the 27th of January. Um, on favor?
I oppose.
Matt, if you can just. No. But we do have, so that, that's. If Matt and Roy want to add something to those minutes, uh, we can open it back up for the next meeting. The next, and then we want to wait for Jim to come back. Assistance with this. The next, our next order of business is, uh, appeal number six, 3835. I'm not gonna read it again because it has changed. We're, uh, tabled this at our last meeting and requested some more information from the applicant. So now we do have more. Describe what it is, man.
Okay, will do. Um, I'm Gary Robinson, of course, and I represent dental contracting. Um, I thought I'd just go over the revisions we did on the plan and explain what they are and why we did them. Um, the first one we did was the, uh, we prepared a, a draft of a shared easement or a shared access agreement. And, uh, you should've got that with the application. And there's about one page, really, the second page is the one that talks mostly, well, I guess some on the first page, talks about the different, uh, things that they have, the responsibilities that the residents would have, um, being a, a part owner and that easement and their responsibility for maintenance and ownership. I'm thinking if you guys have questions on it, we can go over it later. I'll just run through all the changes we made to start. Second thing is we added a note. We added a note on the, um, plan for the common drives that just said that if you were gonna buy a lot in here, that there would be a common drive that you would be part of. We added a, uh, detail, we added, uh, on the road that, uh, would be that common driveway. We went into the building code and we did make that compliant with the fire code in New York State. It starts off at 20 foot wide and in the back, in front of the hydrant that's back there, it's, uh, the 26 foot wide. And then we added a, uh, T-turnaround at the end that's back to being 20 foot wide. And it all complies with the, uh, with the, uh, state code. Um, you can see a little more detail off the right of the plan where I just blew it up so you could get a clearer idea of where everything was. And I did note on there that it complies with all of the requirements. Let's see, the third thing, uh, we added a note regarding the gun, gun club. I think Mr. Brody was, uh, was on and, uh, he just asked that we make sure that everyone realizes that the gun, gun club has been there for a long time and it is going to probably continue and it shouldn't be deemed objectionable. Uh, we put that note down near our title block. We add, we.
I could interrupt Gary just for a second. I think we finally got Matt through.
Okay.
Matt, are you there? Cause I see a microphone.
You guys here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yup.
Yeah, I had to switch computers to get a different setup. I was called in on my cellphone, but for some reason the audio still wasn't working, kinda strange. So I apologize for inconvenience, everyone.
No problem.
Nope. Uh, and by the way, just for the record, Trish, uh, he did write in via chat here that he approved, he voted yes on the minutes.
Yes, I saw that.
Just to, could they get that on the record? So we're all square now. Sorry, Gary, go ahead.
Okay, that's all right. Um, we added a, um, detail on the curb cut. With, what it is, is there's actually, uh, DOT has a, a standard for doing commercial and, uh, residential curb cuts. And there's a little design involved in it. And, uh, we actually did that design and put that detail on. It's in the center on the bottom of the plan sheet. We added a cross-section of the paved road, uh, that we've used in the past for, uh, to support the 75,000 pound, uh, fire vehicles. And, uh, we asked, we were asked to get letters from people and I kinda like to go over that now. Just the different people that I talked to. Not so easy to get letters, not so easy to get ahold of everybody or the right person. But, uh, I tried to give a summary of it there. Uh, I have talked to everybody that we were thinking we needed to talk to. Uh, plus I also talked to Jesse. We hadn't really talked about that before. But, uh, with DOT, I think you guys probably got a copy of the DOT comments. And what they're saying is that, uh, their common driveway allowance is up to four. And the ones we've done, I guess, we, cause I've done four or five that are more than four lots, but I, they must not be on a state highway. So what we, what we did to resolve that, the, the main entrance is still designed exactly to the residential entrance that can take up to four lots. And what we did, there's a, actually a curb cut that exists on 197 that goes into this lot. We had it shown on our original plan. On the revised plan, I actually showed that we were, uh, we would put in a 12-foot-wide driveway at that curb cut. I did, uh, put in a, uh, email to her to try to get in contact with her today, which, uh, she didn't get, she didn't get back to me. But, um, I, at any rate, um, when we get to a point where we have to build something, we would, uh, we would have to get a permit from them. So it's really, uh, they don't normally give us anything besides what they get at this point on her letter. I talked with the fire department chief, Pete Corleau. I, uh, scheduled to try to get together with him, but, uh, at his job, he's had a lot of issues with some of the homes that he deals with and we weren't ever able to get together. But I had sent him a copy of our plans and he looked it all over. He said he talked to a couple of the other fire people and he said they're, they're 100%. They, they said this is great. It's just what we would want. So you're good to go as far as we're concerned.
And on that note, Gary, uh, I did speak with Kathy Perez in the building department today. She had a call from Peter Corleau, uh, just to confirm that, that same outcome. Peter's, uh, agrees with the plan as long as it meets state specification for, uh, access for most of the vehicles, he's fine with it.
Okay. I did talk, uh, I talked to the highway superintendent and just talking to him because when we were talking about, we, we were talking about considering, um, a cul-de-sac and, and I was saying why we didn't choose to do a cul-de-sac. And I, I was saying that Paul would likely say that he's not interested in a cul-de-sac and that he would prefer the private drive, which he did confirm that today. We did talk about some other, he, he had some other reasons why he wouldn't want one there. And he said they've, and I don't know this, that he was telling me that, that the, uh, the cul-de-sac radius expanded and, um, he said, you may not have enough room there anyway. And, um, he said, but we, we don't like, it's so short and for five lots, he said, we'd be fighting it. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want you to do that. And, and one of the things that we did just in passing was not having the cul-de-sac actually reduces the amount of pavement that we would have on the site. And, and I know Jim knows that when we're talking about stormwater on sites, um, you know, whenever you can reduce the impervious area on the site, that's a good thing. So just another point. And then I talked to, uh, Jesse. We had, uh, when I was talking to the, um, the fire chief, he said, I, I see you have a hydrant there. And I said, yeah, and, and I said, uh, he goes, you might wanna talk to Jesse. And I said, okay. So I called Jesse and, uh, we talked quite a bit. And Jesse was, um, concerned that it might be a private, um, maybe considered a private hydrant. And I told him that wasn't what we were thinking. We were thinking that it would be a town hydrant and we would have an easement. And I said, we're not, we're not sure that, it, it's not required. Um, I did check into the 10-state standards and it's not required to have a hydrant at the end there. And I said, you know, I, to tell the truth, um, we didn't really talk. When I talked to Pete Corleau, we didn't really talk about whether, um, he would want a hydrant. I just said that, you know, we, the owner had told me that they thought they would put a hydrant at the end and take their services off, um, the, the line that went out to the hydrant. And when I talked to, uh, Jesse, he said, you know, he goes, I don't think you're gonna wanna do that. And he goes, we didn't do that in that McKenna project that was over on Route 32. He said, what he did was he tapped off our main line and just ran services into all the houses, uh, instead of putting a hydrant back where the houses were and.
I think he, I think McKenna put a hydrant out by the roadside.
Yeah, and, and we have one, there's a, there's an existing hydrant that's about 20 feet west of our driveway that goes in that common drive. So there is a hydrant within, it's, it's about 400 feet, uh, from that hydrant into the end of the road. So I, it's not required by anyone. Jesse didn't say he was interested. Um, I, I, uh, talked to the owners today and they said, you know, we, we can go either way. Um, but we, we were just thinking that somebody would want it. And I said, well, we, you know, we can talk about that at planning board and see what planning board thinks and, you know, we'll go from there. But, um, Jesse did say that if we were gonna put a hydrant in because the, uh, fire department felt it was a concern, that he would, um, recommend that it be taken over by the town and the town do the maintenance on it. And, uh, I think those are all the things that I had to, to do to cover. And I don't know if you guys have any questions, comments, uh, but I'm all ears.
So the plan is to put waters, these, uh, so it'll be town water, correct?
Yes, yes, there's a water line that is on our side of Route 197.
And then the business about the, uh, the, the other driveway, that's where it says the existing earthen drive.
Yes.
On the plan.
Right.
So lot number five would not be served by the shared driveway, is that correct?
It would not, no.
And again, that existing is 12-foot wide, is that what you would say? I'm sorry?
Uh, what I said was we would put, normally people have driveways that are 12 feet wide. That, that driveway, when that comes in off the road, it's about, I think it's about 17 feet wide where it comes in off the road. So.
So you would keep it.
Normally people with a, with a driveway, you know, that's something that the builder does and they negotiate that with the builder when they, they get in. I mean, we, we, I don't know if you can tell from the plan, but, um, what we did is we kept it the same width up into the property line. And then we show it coming out at 12 feet at the property line.
So you don't have any storm drainage in there? You've just got the, you've got, you're bringing new hydrant, you're bringing water?
We're bringing water. Um, there would be, um, drainage that would be along the, the shared driveway. It would go into the, um, the existing, uh, drainage ditch in the front. And just, uh, it's a little pass, it's probably about 50 feet, uh, west of where we have our common driveway come out, that there's a cross culvert. It's a 24-inch cross culvert, I think, that goes across the road and the drainage goes down the other side. So we would put a culvert under our driveways. Um, and, um, of course that would go to DOT after we get planning board approval for their approval.
Well, cause that was my question. Pitch to it, you don't have a pitch, we don't have any, uh, concrete gutters or wing walls or anything like that. So you're gonna do a, you're gonna actually have a, what are you gonna do to, for the culvert? You're gonna do a French drain to it or I was gonna get to the culvert? I don't see any structures here.
Well, the grade will be, we don't have the topo on that plan yet, but the grade, it'll be graded down. That site needs some fill. So it's gonna be graded down to the road. And, uh, so there will be a longitudinal, uh, slope on the road that comes from the back down to the front.
Comes down through.
So yeah, just bear in mind, if this, if we're to get approval, this has to go by a planning board for subdivision. And at that time, they're getting into a grading plan. There'll be a soil and, uh, roaching control plan as well, at least at that juncture.
And I assume they'll also review that road construction with a three-inch binder without any top coat. I'm not sure what the rules and parameters are, but I assume they'll be looking at that too.
Yes, yup, they will.
Then you gotta write a drawing and it's gonna be the 75,000 pound.
Yeah.
I guess I, my biggest concerns are, um, we've, we've got some of these, I know that we did the one over with McKenna. I believe that one was a piece of that property that one of those lives touched the roof. Uh, am I incorrect in that?
That, that one did. There have been.
Well, look, there was other ones, yes.
Yeah, but the McKenna makeup was such that they, they couldn't make that work.
And we, but we've also sat and, and had meetings about houses that they wanted renovations to, that were already existing, shares, uh, siloed. There's been issues. Uh, it's not something the town really wants. I don't believe, I mean, I don't think this is something that, it's, it's not in our zone. It's not in our, our laws for the town. And I think that's for you. As much as you can do all kinds of legal documents, it's for people that live there to make a difference. And it can be a very troublesome circumstance. I, I, I have big concerns with shared driveways.
I, I can tell you of the ones that we've done in the past, we haven't had issues. But I can see where, you know, and, and you can see in the, in the document that the attorney talks about what to do no matter what happens. He's got everything covered. And I know that that becomes an issue. It also says in there because, you know, we've, we've heard from towns that, you know, we wanna make sure they know that it has nothing to do with us. And we also, there's a some, I see a section in there where he has a note on that that says, you know, this, this is nothing to do with the town. And, uh, also if you looked at, um, the DOT girl's, uh, comments, um, they also review the, um, uh, the draft, uh, ownership and maintenance agreement to make sure that it meets their requirements too, which we think that it does. But, uh, she'll be looking at that when we go to actually, uh, get a permit for that to come onto the state highway. So I'm, I think we've talked about it as much as we can.
Kinda think about how many of these we have in town.
I know of two.
At least two, I know of that.
I know of at least three.
I don't, I don't.
We have, there's one off of Route 9. That was before my time.
Okay, there's one up on that, so I think there's four.
And there's one, um, one on Route 32 there, uh, um.
Yorky subdivision.
York subdivision.
And then there's one down, uh, Phidam. That was the one that we had the issue with down by the river.
Oh, down the avenue.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a share.
I, you know, from my standpoint, you know, as a planner, I, I, I used to be, you know, um, these things used to chill a recession with me, but I sense a warmth to them. You know, some, if the, the proper precautions and procedures are put in place, it is work. And, you know, is it, is it, uh, a town maintained accessway? No, it is not. On the other hand, too, the town doesn't have to take on that cost and that responsibility either. But on the positive side, it does result less curb cuts, you know, along the, along the road. But correspondingly, you, you could put in the town road and you'd have the same effect. So, yeah, I, I, in my mind, I warmed up to them as long as they're properly executed. In other words, the easements are properly reported in the deeds, the maintenance agreement's in place. And from the public's concern that we do have the, um, the public safety element addressed in terms of, you know, the accessibility of the driveway is properly constructed and the fire department's, you know, on board with it.
And if the road, and if we see that the road, the roadway becomes deteriorated and has big piles and, and there's issues like that for the fire person, how would we handle that?
Well.
But it's town. I mean, if, if the five people living there said it's fine with me, then by the way, I can ride snow. What do we do?
Well, I, I, I do think the, it would be pretty, would have to be, uh, followed a pretty core condition, but I do think you could enforce the subdivision plat at that time. You know, because the subdivision plat, uh, is gonna have this driveway cross-section on it. It's, it's, it's gonna be portraying that a standard of, of the driveway has to be in place. And if it's not, um, you know, I think that could be enforceable.
I can appreciate your concerns. You guys have a lot more experience with this than I do. But I feel like your primary concern could be the legality. Should there arise a situation where this thing falls into the state of disrepair? Or could be a safety hazard?
Well, absolutely. And I, I, I mean, I'm, to be fully, uh, upfront, when I had the snowfall, it was years ago, I actually towled one of the roads in here that says shared driveway. And even back then, that was a very, very proud. People, some people paid, some people didn't. There was, how do you get it straightened out? Yes, what I'm saying is you can have all kinds of legal factors. Legal factor is only good for, you go court. And that could take you a year, that could take you two years. And I think the reason the town has purposely steered away from shared driveways is because of those very real problems.
You know, I'm inclined to agree with Kevin in terms of, you know, the, the shared driveways. So if we get into a lot of these kinds of things, and I don't want to see us to do it because what happens is if we, we have people come to us and they say we need this fix, we need this done because our, and we just have to say it's not the town's responsibility. Somebody else is your burden or you're, you're, you have a covenant with it, you know, with your neighbors to do this. But, you know, they're not doing it well, what are you gonna do about it? We can't do anything about it. Whereas if that's, if this is, um, if this is a town road, then they do have rights. And, and, you know, I, I mean philosophically, if you start putting all these private domains in this town, why the hell would we wanna make patches to the town? I mean, you know, why would I want to? Well, I don't get that from the department. Why do I wanna, you know, and, and it's just, you know, I mean, that's the extreme. But I mean, that's, we have had people come here and, and it is, well, we should fix this road. Well, we can just private it. And that is an issue. And I think that's, you know, private roads, I don't, I don't wanna see us getting into too many private roads. So my question, Mr. Gary, is, I mean, I think you explained this somewhat at the last meeting, but I was on Zoom, I was having a hard time catching it. Why not a common one? I know that, I know that the high mission superintendent would prefer not to, but, but why not from the building?
Why, why does he wanna have a common drive?
No, why don't, why don't you folks want to build a town road and have a cul-de-sac?
Right. Well, a couple of reasons. Number one, I think there would be more, um, I think there would be some people that, uh, live adjacent to the back. If you look at where that lot is, there's houses along the, the, uh, that, uh, live adjacent to the back. If you look at where that lot is, there's houses along the, the, uh, road that's just above it. I don't recall.
Okay, so at the end of that road, where this little thing says the CTO machine, that's, that's some property with a house on it?
Say it again.
I know. Okay, if you look at, if you look at her drawing here, that we have in front of us, and you go to the end of that shared drive.
Right.
Um, then you've got some property lines and you've got a couple of properties back, three properties actually. Are they all properties with houses on them already?
They are, yes. Yes. So.
So, so if he was to put a cul-de-sac in there, would it have to be back further into here?
What we're thinking is that the people that are on those lots would be unhappy having a road both in the front and the back of them. And if we put this road in, this would be private. It's a, it's just a common driveway. So there wouldn't be traffic that would come in and out of here, um, routinely. Whereas if it was a cul-de-sac, anybody could come in and out of it, uh, routinely. Um, that was one of the.
I don't see that as, I don't see that. I mean, you're not going to have a sign, a great big sign up in front of it that says, right around, you can't drive in. And I don't think you, you, uh, so I can't imagine people would drive into the, a shared driveway anymore, a road anymore than with a shared driveway. If it's just got four or five houses in it.
Well, the, the road is, is going to have a sign, street sign, and it's going to look like a public road. But I, you know, I'm just saying, this is, this is what we talked about when we were doing this. We looked at other alternatives and, um, you know, the, the cul-de-sac, like I say, I, I know the town, I don't think the town would be interested in taking it to tell you. I know, I know Paul isn't. Just because it's a small area, it only serves a couple of houses. Most of the, the cul-de-sacs that are in the town are in a, a road that goes a ways back and.
Well, we've got one right on 197, right down by the river. It's got four houses in it. That is a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I don't think that's a much problem, but it sounds, what you're saying is that it would take up more property on these lots.
It would.
Right, that's.
It would definitely, it would definitely take up more property on the lots. There'd be drainage that the town would have to maintain. There, you know, it's, you know, you'd have, you would have a main line. I don't know if we'll end up with a hydrant, but, um, you probably would have a main water line that came up into that area and you would have a hydrant at the end. Um, I mean, like I say, we, you know, talking to Paul, all those things, things that he'd rather not have. Uh, it's, you know, it's one of those things. It's, it's certainly it's less costly for both the town and the builder. And I think it serves the same purpose. And I think some people like that. I think the, the, the buyers wouldn't, would like that because there's, it is not public. You know, it's private, so they can go out and say, you know, look, no blow that's coming in here. Look, don't, don't turn in here. Don't come in here. It's not, it's not just for public use.
Yes, I'm, I'm feeling like the cost we can reach to the, to the town and the owners is less of a concern. And, and the fact dimensionally, you'd have to really cut into these lots. You know, I mean, if, I mean, I run cul-de-sacs for, you know, and more stuff for the maintenance department to, to take care of this. You know, as an issue, but it's, it's not, to me, it's not an issue if it makes sense to do it.
Well, I think it, I think it gives you, if the town, if the town road, we have the comfortable to know that it is going to be maintained in the winter. That if there was a fire back there, that the town is going to have to follow that road. When you rely upon a private driveway with, with, with the private parties hiring out somebody, we don't know that. So I mean, there's two, uh, I, I, I understand what their, uh, third points are, but I hope that the, you can understand what my points are. Because we, we've seen these and, and through the years they had some issues. And I, I, I haven't warmed up to as much as Jim has, I guess. I mean, we've done them. We've done them, but I, I'm not sure that when I look at this, I feel like that's really what I think we should be looking at. I, I think we should be looking at a town road. If they want to put these lots in there, it should be a town.
If, if it was to be approved with that, um, is it absolutely necessary that you have that second cutout? There's no way the state will not allow you to service five lots via that road?
That's correct. They're hard enough.
I just, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not certain. I'm not sure of the traffic, uh, related issues. But does anybody else foresee where that could be potentially?
I think that holds, I think.
Situation with the two driveways so close.
Well, I think it's been, uh, passed down for a rowing. I mean, I think that when I saw that input in, I questioned, wow, on a hill like this, with the traffic that we have, you know, certainly I agree with you that having two would even be worse. I mean, I, I, I certainly agree with that.
And, and I want to, I want to be clear to Gary, the plan is very thorough. The revisions seem very appropriate. You guys have done your due diligence, uh, talked to all the proper authorities. But having said that, to Gary's point, um, I could foresee this becoming more the norm. And I'm not sure that that's ideal, but I mean, you, you know, I'm, I'm different.
Was there, was there a common driveway on, um, McKenna's property? There was.
Yeah. Yep. And, but he, he, he did technically meet the law requirements, Gary, because he, he made the flag fake lots. He got the frontages on the.
So, so he, he didn't have to come to ZBA because he provided 40 foot, uh, for that flag lot. And then he, then after that, he was allowed to have a common driveway at planning board, right?
Yeah, he went through the whole, this whole process at the, at the planning board level, uh, for the shared driveway. He has the maintenance man in place. Um, he built to a certain standard for the, for the driveway itself.
Yep.
You know, all that. He did all the same things, but he, he designed his lot layouts so that they were technically compliant.
Well, that goes to my concern. Um, you know, we talked about this. We just listed off the top of our heads four or five of these. Now we're trying to add a sixth one in here. And I just go back to the conversations we keep having out in Gansver in, in those areas where there's lots of farmers who have lots of land. And if everybody could put in a private drive and pop up four lots, probably plenty of people who actually have the land size requirement to do that. So I think that's a dangerous precedence that we set without having any kind of a zoning. Where do we allow these, uh, these private drives to occur? How big do we allow them? When do we allow them? Is there certain corridors we're willing to allow them in and certain corridors, perhaps that as a town, we don't think make sense. Uh, to the chairman's earlier point, you know, if we have these popping up left and right and there's 10, 15, 20 of these things in the town, that becomes a detriment to the town itself because now we have a bunch of pockets and parts and pieces. We don't have a town that's maintained and is taken care of and is up kept. So I understand that's not your particular project, but if we keep approving these and keep approving these, uh, then we'll have a dozen of these things going up Route 32 and going down 197. They'll be everywhere you look. And then to, uh, both Kevin and Justin's earlier points, yes, legal agreements are good as long as the people are abiding by them. Our, our clown is a, our, uh, hands are tied as a town, but there's still a safety concern. There's still potential hazard to somebody, uh, in those houses. Um, the other thing, you know, with the cul-de-sac, and I understand you'll, you know, lot four is sizable. Um, a cul-de-sac would fit on this land if you had to lose one. So I guess where I'm struggling a little bit is where's the hardship? Uh, typically when we do a variance, we try to do something like this. And for me to try to figure why to give you approval for this one, but tell the other guy down the road, uh, up around a corner on 32, why he can't, that would be my one at least would give me some sort of, uh, solace knowing that there was a particular hardship on this one. This was a special unique case. We had to do things differently. But in our conversations last time, I don't think that the hardship has been, uh, it's not been shown, it's not been proven. Um, I don't, I don't quite see where the hardship is for doing it the right way. And I know you keep going back to Paul and the town and Paul and the town, but with all due respect, it's not his decision. It's the zoning board's decision. And if they have to do it, then they have to do it. It's about safety. It's about the quality of the town and the detriment to the neighbors who already live there. It's not about one department super or another department super. It's about the town as a whole. And that's what the five of us are here to try to do is to look at the town as a whole. So again, I do come back to where is the hardship in this plan to do it per code and do it per the zoning?
When we first looked, when we first looked at this, um, we looked at how we could get, you know, the lots there in that property. And we looked at having driveways out on, uh, Route 197. And we talked about different things that we could do. And Jim had told us about McKenna's property. And we looked at McKenna's property and we said, you know, do we want to run, uh, do we want to have 40 foot of frontage? And along 197 and every 40 feet have a driveway that comes out to Route 197. Um, you know, to us, the minimum amount of driveways we can have there, the better off everyone will be. Um, and what we're saying is although you guys don't, don't like them, the planning board seems to like them. I know that, um, we were when, when Rorkeys went in, we were there and, you know, that was something that planning board was, was for. And I think this is a, a similar case. And if we, if we decide that we want to go back and have 40 foot flag lots and we go to planning board, the planning board would give us, um, a common driveway to service lots. And we'd rather not.
I'm sorry about that.
Um, we'd, we'd rather not do that. We'd rather have some nice lots that make sense. The thing that we're asking for the variance from really isn't not whether we can have a common driveway. It's really if we can have frontage along, um, a private drive.
Well, I think, let me speak to the, the, uh, my feelings about lots. That was, I think, the first, uh, recommendation I made to, uh, to the town when they're looking at the culling, was that we look to eliminate those. So, um, I understand it. So I, I don't want, I may make a lot of light marks. And, uh, I think there's, I think there's detrimental to the community too. Um, but at the way that the town's laws are written right now, they're acceptable. So we can't do anything about that. Um, but this is something we can do something about. I mean, I, 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 um,
an easy solution would be to, to approve it and kick it to the planning board and all that. You know, I think that'd be easy. We're just saying no bother. And I think all of these points are, are reasonable.
The issue about flag lots, Jim, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is the question of where the width of the property is measured?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Well, it, it, it's two issues. One is your, your dimensional standard for frontage. In other words, how the lot touches the road. And then the other dimension that comes into play is lot width. Now, there's many ways that can, well, there are several ways of it done. You can have average lot. Or you can have lot width at the setback of the principal building. And that's how we measure it here today currently.
Attention interpretation.
Yeah. So, well, you know, to Kevin's, there is ways that, it wasn't doing and, and you really have to think through it. But there are ways in the regulation that you could, you could define those things and set those things up. The lot frontage and the lot width requirement and all that so that you, in effect, eliminate flag lots. It's not as easy as it sounds to do from a regulatory point of view, but I, I think it, it could be done.
Didn't we talk last time?
It's tricky to do it.
That's me in front of this.
No, that's, that's a discussion.
I, I always throw that out because he was talking about the McKenna and the flag lots and all that. And then.
I mean, I can show you a subdivision that's, um, approved off of Old Saratoga Road, uh, down the way. They've got eight flag lots that are like, they're like stables and all aligned with one another, going up a slope. And then they have a, a shared driveway that cuts across all of them, you know, to access, access the lots. And technically that's a compli, those are compliant lots, but boy, it, it really is.
It's that, yeah. It's, it's really, I mean, I think that, and I, I'm not just speaking when I say that, when we talked about looking at our zoning.
Right.
And that was one of the first things I threw out, that we need to do, like, how we can manage those.
You know, there, 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 there are very good schools of thought on this. There's very re, various reasons. You know, one thing that, that, you know, that the town has, I think, and by virtue of the implication of the, the way we administer the, the code here, like the two lot subdivision, you know, and many of you do this, they, they do encourage, or at least try and not get in the way of exchanges of land between property owners, or I mean, uh, families. You know, where, where kids buy a lot, you know, there's a big farm. I've seen it happen here in my time here, at least a half a dozen times. You know, family members selling, you know, lots to their kids and their grandkids.
Right.
And, and when you do that, you kind of get into these, um, you know, funny lot configurations. Because it, it's a, it's a large lot. It's split up among family members and meet the requirements. The flags are popping up.
My, my question, let's get back to what is the question before the zoning board? I mean, we, this is an area variance.
It's an area variance because it's the, there's, uh, let's see, one, two, three lots that do not have proper frontage, meaning 40 feet on a public road.
So if we, we can deny that, and then the applicant can go and create flag lots for those three lots?
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure. I mean, I'm looking at this and first of all, you got your two primary lots out in the front. One and five years are shown that they do have to maintain their average lot. Now, so they have to have a dimension here where the house can be built and the lot width for the district can be maintained. All right. I don't know. I'm, I'm not a surveyor. I'm not a designer, but my sense is that you might be able to get two lots in the back. You may not get three. You might, I don't know. I don't, you don't have to have somebody look at it with some, with some skill to do that. But the layout appears that you might be able to only get a four lot subdivision here, not five. And then you're going to have two, two of them be flags.
And then what we would do is we would go to planning board and ask for a common driveway for the four lots. But, I don't know. To, to me, it, it seems like it's just better to have a common driveway that's between the lots. That doesn't split up the, the, the lots along the way. And if we, if we could do it, there could be four lots that have driveways that go out on Route 197, which was the biggest thing we were trying.
I don't know if we're going to get through the state of the county here. I, I, I don't know that you meet their district requirements.
I don't think.
That may be, I don't think they can do that from.
I don't think they can.
Because under what I just said, lot one and five would have direct drive through 197. And then you'd have that third shared driveway for the two lots in the back. And those are three driveways. You know, bing, 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 right next to each other.
So we're only losing one. We're going from three driveways to two. We're not going from five driveways to one. We're going from three driveways to two. So we're not getting this huge benefit by having less curb cuts. We're cutting out literally one, one residence. So it's not that conversation. It's, it's again, we're not going from five curb cuts to one. We're going from three to two. Um, and again, it comes down to the same conversation. As you mentioned, there's six, you've had half a dozen already with these farmers and their families. And again, and rich like right now, McKenna is being kind of used as a, as a leveraging tool in this conversation. We approve this one and then both of these become leveraging tools in the next conversation. Um, I just, again, I think we're going down a dangerous road by breaking the rules here without really having a good reason to break it. These lots are not subdivided currently. Uh, there's one large lot there that they're trying to subdivide. So again, I just, I don't, I fail to see the hardship and I fail to see the true advantage here. Again, we're setting a precedence where now anybody with acreage can do this, uh, in any spot of town they want to do it in. I think that's a dangerous precedence. Um, if the planning board is inclined to do it, they constantly change as we do. Uh, but again, I can't control the planning board. I can't control the town supervisory board. Um, but I, I do have one single vote in the zoning board.
You know, the other thing that we don't have is that we don't have a comparison of what it would look like with a cul-de-sac versus what it looks like.
The shared driveway with a cul-de-sac.
Unfortunately, it's not the way, the rules as we would like them to be. The rules are.
The rules are the rules. And I'm generally not a spickler on the rules. I'm, I'm hearing from you guys who've been doing this a while, there could be special issues and I can appreciate that. From Gary, I can appreciate, you know, this for those, for them makes the most sense. And I would be inclined to say, fine, but I'm a little bit torn on my part. The plan, to Matt's point, where is the real hardship? I mean, and to Gary's point, it would be preferable just to see some dimensions as to why the cul-de-sac wouldn't work. And, and I respect. Well, I'm not so sure. I mean, um, because the cul-de-sac doesn't need to be a, a perfectly symmetrical, like, you know, stem leading to, you know, a circle. You could offset the cul-de-sac in the lot four. Cause lot four has got the area to give up to the right of ways. So it, it would, it would be kind of offset or curved into that lot and that becomes a smaller lot. So I, I, I'm not so sure that a cul-de-sac wouldn't fit.
I'm thinking it would really.
And that would alleviate the concerns for drainage. It would alleviate the concerns for the maintenance, the safety. It'd be doing it by the book. We wouldn't necessarily, you know, we would have that and then the town would have to maintain it. And that would be kind of, I think, what we're looking for. And I agree with Jim 100%. That can be a P shape and we can fit a cul-de-sac and we can follow the rules in this instance. The lots are large enough, the land is big enough, we can follow the rules. We don't have to create a variance.
I, I don't, I don't think that we can get the lots in there with a cul-de-sac because the road itself would be a lot wider than what we're proposing there. And we would not have frontage for the lots that are in the front on Reynolds Road. So I don't, I don't think that would, I don't think that would bring us, I think we would probably lose two lots there. Maybe three with a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And, um.
I don't know. I, I bet you, I bet you could lose one lot.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Again, that's not the concern.
I mean, I, I just, you know, I don't know. And we're saying, I don't think, I think, you know, it's, I'd like to know. I'd like, you know, we, we, one of the things we've learned through this, uh, this process of being on the board is that we like down in sense. You know, I want to see it down in some sense and see, you know, in actual figures what it is. Which this versus this.
Well, yeah, if you're going to talk of hardship, right? And we have to, but we're looking at making, because we are breaking, we're, we're giving the commission to do something, the town's book code. And when we're making the determination, we're giving everyone the reasons to do it. All of the things as, as he says, hardship, hardship. When, when I heard the cost and tag, what, you know, how big of a hardship is, is it? Um, I, you know, I, I just, I don't see that here at this point. And.
To me, this looks like a typical small type subdivision. And it's not, there's nothing unusual about this. Nothing unique. And it's had, they had wires going through, they had all kinds of hills and, and everything. And to place down in 10 feet of dam, that was already there.
Yeah, that was pretty, that was long, long ago.
This just looks like a.
And, and the one over on Mountain Road, remember, you said you just started. They had to sit in the last, but more last time and, and well, weren't allowed because of the issues with that.
And I think we did that speech over a thousand.
Oh, yes, that was another one. We, we, they said no. Said no, right.
You know, when it's, when it's this typical, if we get into a long front of driveways or, or just saying, no, we don't have to go through. I guess we're under risk of flag lots. I don't want to see either, but.
I hope we can work on that.
I think we, we shouldn't be.
Well, do we want to, um, do any deliberation or do we allow those, uh, posts of public areas?
Do we have any, any comments on that?
We didn't, there were no comments either, um, at the first meeting or tonight. And I don't see anybody on here, um, on the line. So there have been none.
Let me ask this. Would you like us to prepare something, um, that shows how a cul-de-sac could fit? Or what flag lots would look like? Or is that, that not going to help you see what the hardship is?
I would feel about it if I had something to compare it to.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than just saying, no, I, I don't want to say, but I would, I would, to Matt's point, I'd just like to see the hardship and see, okay, we're going to lose two lots or three lots. To Jim's point, maybe you won't. Maybe there's a way to configure it so that that won't be the case. I, I'd just like to see it.
And, you know, I, I would, I would hope that you would, if you're going to do that, definitely look at a cul-de-sac. See if it's workable because I would be much more comfortable having a town, from moving in there and having a lot of space to sound well.
And I say I'd, well, look at it, I would, um, I agree with Justin. I don't, I hate saying, I don't like that, but, but the point is that this looks very typical until I see it. So I don't really want to.
You want to.
I want just to be different than your typical five, five lot subdivision.
Here, I, I still, just, just so I understand too, but before we, we, uh, get off this topic, what happened with area A and area B? In the half.
Those are just going to be lot line adjustments, um, that would go to the adjacent owner.
So what, what should they, what are the, which lot is going to be receiving that, that land?
Um, the one, area A is going to the lot to the left, I believe. And area B is staying as part of the, uh, subdivision. I think it might have something to do with drainage or something. But when he bought this property, they, uh, they made that agreement that those lots would be, um, put off to, uh, taken off by lot line adjustments. That's, we did have, and I don't know that, I think we had that on the notes of.
Yeah, I, I think we mentioned it before, right? But I probably already have any, but I just don't fully understand what it means going to.
And when was this lot purchased?
Uh, recently, probably four months ago.
I only bring that up because again, we go back to the hardship. This land was built, it was, it was drawn this way. This particular lot was this size. It was in the zoning that it's in. And there was a strategic decision to be made to buy this piece of land. So as far as hardship, I'm not going to entertain monetary as a hardship. This is a profitable venture where people are making money. We're talking about maybe making a little less money, but it's still a profitable venture. So I, when I think of a hardship related to money, I think of a, either a family that grew and can no longer kind of afford the means and methods. Uh, when I think of hardship, I look at, again, uh, strange lot sizes, lot designs, uh, zoning changes. My in-laws had their zoning changed on them, nothing they knew about, but it happened. That's a real hardship that you can't control. It's again, a strategic decision by someone to purchase a piece of land for a profit. And so the fact that you're going to make a little bit less profit is not what I would consider a hardship, uh, in this definition. So when we're looking at that cul-de-sac and we're going through those things, the loss of one lot does not constitute a hardship in my eyes. Again, this was, this law has not changed. You bought it with these parameters and it was bought under these zoning laws. Um, so that was known when you came into it. That was all known. It's not a hardship, it's not a surprise. It was a strategic decision.
So I guess.
And the question is, you, you want us to table this again and come back with some more information on what we just talked about?
Well, if, if everybody's saying that there's, there's nothing I can do to show you that, you know, it would take lots away, that it would be difficult, it would, you know, then I don't want to waste a month. Uh, we've got a planning board and try to do something there. But if, if you're thinking that you want to see that in order to make a decision, we'll do a sketch of the, the two different options that we have there, which is with the, uh, flag lots or with a cul-de-sac. And I think you'll find that the cul-de-sac's going to, it's going to eliminate some lots. And with the, uh, flag lots, it's going to be an undesirable development of that land. It's going to be, it's, it's, it's something that we can, I think we can do, but I think that it's going to be undesirable. I think having the, um, way that we have the driveway now is, is much more desirable, which is why we came here in the first place. But, um, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, when we took, when we look at area variances, we're looking at weighing, you know, it isn't like this has to be, you know, it's not a use variance, it's an area. So it's, we can weigh the structures. So we, we can, you know, weigh the, you know, if we can look at other alternatives and say, well, this is the best alternative. That doesn't mean I'm going to say yes, I'm just, you know, I'm not more.
We would, we're always open to look at if you've got more information, if you did double drives and they show something to us that we realize, because we're, we're weighing the situation. If that gives more weight to, to, to work towards, you're saying, then if they're going to, I'm not saying that I would agree with it if I'm given the reason.
Okay, well, I tell you what, let's, uh, if you guys can table it, that, that would be good. Um, unfortunately, uh, uh, the, um, somebody from the owner couldn't be, couldn't be around tonight. So he isn't on to ask. And what I would do is I would go back to them, say, the, the ZBA tabled it. And here's what we have to do. And if they decide, no, we want to go to the planning board, then you want to see us next month.
Okay, well, that's certainly fair.
Right? And if, if you get an application from me, we'll be, we'll be back. All right.
We can ask for more of that.
Okay, Gary, I would like you to close the loop. If it, if it decides, if the decision is made to go to the planning board, then I would like a formal withdrawal of those applications just so we're aware.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that.
All right, so I'll make sure that we table this till next week.
We can leave the public here now?
Yeah, we can leave the public here now.
Would you call the board here? All right. I'm a discussion. And you're, you're saying you're comfortable with that, Gary, right?
Yes, I do. Yeah, uh, just a second.
Okay.
Please.
Um, okay. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Alms?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, come on, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Good luck with the same year.
Okay, so we have this solar law. Little unusual, but I think nonetheless, um, worthwhile. Give your input on the full law.
Do you town have any idea what they're going to produce of?
Well, as, as I understand it, they've been doing a lot of work on it for the better part of a year, meaning the town board has. And, uh, I, I, I initiated it with an initial draft, but, um, after that, uh, I've been, I've been, I think I've been the one or two of the town board meetings where they've taken this up. But they, they, they've, uh, discussed this at least half of the time, if not more. And, uh, Carla's been doing a lot of the work on it lately. Uh, and she is all available by phone by the way we need her. So if we come to a point in our discussion tonight, if you have a question that she can answer, she says, she's available by phone. Um, but, uh, that said, um, this started, it, it originated out of, of, out of several different laws and things typically do when you try to draft a law. There is a state model law that was a fundamental basis for this and is, it's a basis for, um, many of the, the municipal solar laws in the state. And then what we did is we tried to come up with like communities with like concerns, sort of borrow, you know, some provisions from them and, and make a law that is best for, for the, you know, the moral. So with that as a backdrop, that was the impetus for the first draft. Um, and then the town board and their deliberations have been, uh, changing and revising for, for various sections as they gone through it. And Carla's been the keeper of, of the document since that time. And she has, she has now the, the draft in its current form, which is the one that is before you. And, um, and so it's, it's a typical section of a local law. It's intended, you can see by the number, it would be inserted zoning code. So you have, you know, purview over it as zoning board of appeals. Any variance from this, uh, will come to you, either as a typical fashion, area or use. Um, it does start out with some specialized definitions that are unique to this law. Uh, terms like abandonment, decommissioning, um, building integrated solar, all these various things that, all these terms that come into, that you play with this law are defined here. And then some things like principal use is a term here that means one thing was opposed to what it might in, in the, um, in the standard zoning code. So that's why that term is specifically defined here in the manner in which it's used in, in this section of the zoning code. If, if this were to be passed and they can put it in the zoning. Uh, so there, there's definitely a beginning at, at the beginning of the law. Uh, there's a section on permanent transfers, um, pretty, I think that's pretty straightforward. Uh, now, where this does, uh, begin to, uh, track with the, I think this is in the state model law, is this idea of setting up tiers of solar energy systems. Uh, uh, and tier one is, is you can see here is of the smaller scale, residential scale, if you will, uh, solar systems, uh, meaning the roof mounted, uh, which was just very common. We're seeing more and more of it. Uh, we even have a specialized building permit for it. Uh, and it's, it's actually from a zoning point of view, it's the least intrusive way to write forward for residents rather than a separate ground mounted utility out in the yard. Then, then it becomes more of a concern from a regulatory standpoint.
Jim, on that, can I just ask a question about that definition? It talks about building integrated solar energy systems.
Yes.
And it's specifically only roof mounted, whereas the state model law talks about building integrated. Why, why was that not part of?
Uh, that's a good question. I was not, that, that was not, uh, something I was party to in terms of that discussion. I know there was a lot of discussion on, on the integration of panels into the roof. You know, how high they, they could go? Should they go beyond the peak? Um, how far should they sit off the, the roof surface itself? Uh, that kind of thing was discussed, but, um.
That would be complicated.
Yeah.
There was a delivery in there for how high it can be.
Yes.
Heavy, low, deep.
There was a, we had a lot of discussion about that.
I think that, I.
But they also talk, the state model law talks about building integration, which is, you know, it could be a wall, it could be a hundred skyline. But I remember the thing, but I think that's, that's complicated if you retrofit your house or building a house. You can do all kinds of.
You can do a lot of those. But what do you really mean, they can be built right in the house, the wall, yes.
I, I would think it would be simple enough just to include that.
I didn't read this, I have to be honest, I didn't read the state rules. But the tier two, to jump to the tier two, so where are you making up with 110% of the electricity consumed on a section over the previous couple of months? Why would, it can, most people that go with the expense of putting in solar, if they can generate a little bit more and it goes back to the grid, it helps to pay for it. If you're limiting it to 110% use, you're pretty much eliminating that passability. So I, I had a question, is that, is that something that the town is coming up with? And what would, what have been the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, see, I, I, I think that is, if not part of the, um, uh, model law. I, I got a copy in my office, like we would not get one.
I don't believe it is, it's just.
It's not, and that was a standard that was picked up, you know, from my, from my other community's, you know, uh, law.
Cause I'm wondering, and reading a little bit back where I saw this, I, I'm not, I think this may eliminate some of the opportunities that residents have to put in, uh, put in solar and, and actually have it be cost new for them. Because that's what the big push was.
So, so including the 110% standard, standard could be prohibited.
Well, I mean, look at it, I'm not sure that, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to. Well, I mean, look at that, I'm not sure that, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to, I'm not saying maybe it should be 130%, because I mean, I guess what I would be looking for is research and, and what was so likely to see the reason behind it. Because if I could generate 200% of what I used last year, send that 100% extra to the, to the grid, they're going to pay me back for the cost of my solar panels, and, and I would be having electricity for free, I mean, I don't get why we would limit that.
If, I don't intend as part of the state.
Is it really, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I don't know why, but I mean, it's, maybe they want you to go to the next tier to have a higher level of approval.
I don't agree with you, but I guess. That may be, I don't, thank you for that, because I didn't know.
Okay, so that answers that question.
That answers that, okay.
Um, so yeah, you have the tier two there, and that's defined, and that's basically the point of the part from tier one, and then, um, tier three are simply those systems that do not qualify as, as, uh, tier one or tier two.
This may sound really, uh, you know, uninformal, I skimmed around this, this stuck out to me with tier, with respect to tier three, the solar system, systems do not be permitted to be constructed on prime farmland, it, I don't have any understanding, when I read the description of prime farmland, that seems to me that it would be any of the farmlands around here, and if this says that these, these, uh, systems and farms are supposed to be children permitted, it seems like we're really limiting the potential for that development.
This goes to the, I think this topic goes to the core of the, the crux of the matter with this law and this case, um, and I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the degree to which, you know, solar energy systems should be allowed in the, in the ag district or, or parts within the ag district, and that is the crux of the matter.
I want to talk about soil composition, and it stands to reason that if it's prime farmland, it would be the ideal soils defined by the US Department of Agriculture, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
So it just, of all the stuff that I, and I really did not get all of this, certainly not in any kind of memory, but that really stuck out to me as being potentially very limiting.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I just, I can't imagine why we would necessarily have had something to, into that, uh, that box.
Well, I, I would agree with that.
So what, what, what is, what would you have as, what would you like to see then?
I, I would just defer to other municipalities that, you know, are, are they compliant with this, we need to be clear as to what is defined as prime, who defines that, are we able to define that as, as a town or a, or you have to strictly adhere to USDA, DEC, et cetera, Army Corps of Engineers, I, I'm just unclear.
My opinion was too generic, I think, I, I think what, what should be a real line of prime land should be more, uh, defined, I mean, if you've got a 200 acre prime land with 160 acres of tillable land, and you're not going to build, and, 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 you know, there's a, a, we don't want to cut all the trees down to put in rocks, so there should be a, like, they're quick to put 110% on the amount you can produce above what you can consume, so you should be able to have a percentage of how much land could be designated to solar panels against the, the size of the tillable land.
No, I don't know if this is a situation where, you know, again, we're concerned that these are going to pop off everywhere, I mean, we're limited to the ag agricultural lands.
Well, I'll tell you what, see, what, 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 what initiated the debate behind this law was, right now, we have no solar treatment at all beyond what has been the interpretation, and that is, right now, in the manufacturing districts, um, power plants are listed, allowed use, like for example in the M1.
Okay.
And the prior determination, I think it was made by Joe Patrick, and I agree with it, given the, the limited, you know, uh, the limited tools we have to work with, that a commercial grade solar energy generation, like a large solar array, is a power plant, it meets that definition, and so therefore, the only places they're allowed in the town are in the M1 and M2 districts.
And we went over that.
And there's been primarily from, well, I, I don't know if it's primarily, but I'm aware it leaves a couple farmers who are really interested in being able to use their property, uh, you know, for a solar generation farm.
Not all, but partial, partial, part of it.
There, there's been some, and then the fact that it comes into play with these things, if, in case you haven't, you know, heard this, you know, and, and just deliberations on the subject, um, they can only be feasibly located within a certain distance of a major transmission.
Right, it has to be near, and.
And so, as, as it turns out, um, Row has got several, and they happen to be in our ag district.
And, and that's what this, as you said.
That's the crux of the matter.
And as this is written right now, would be my understanding that those farmers who are interested in, in converting some of their lands would not be able to do that, is that correct?
Yeah, this current draft, the way this is drafted is very limiting on that.
So I think that is a problem. Is there any, I did not read, is there any benefit to the town as far as monetary benefit or tax?
Yeah, there is a very, um, one of the latter sections here, the pilot section.
Okay, I did not see.
Um.
I didn't understand why that was part of.
It's kind of like victory for trying to limit some of the growth or incentivizing it with a pilot, right? And how's, who's paying for that pilot, Jim, is that coming through the state or IDA, or where's it coming from?
No, it, it, it's from the solar provider to the town.
Right.
And the justification for that is that, um, I, I think there's limits as to how much these, these things are, uh, have and are valued for, and then therefore responsible payer of property taxes, so this is a provision by, um, the town realizing some revenue from this property use, because it is essentially a commercial use of, of the property.
So the town could actually realize more revenue than having it just taxed as farm land?
Correct.
I think that's, well, I think that's excellent, and I think that's.
And I, I gotta tell you, in my community in Glenville, we just enacted a law, I, I was going to share this with Carla, because, um, we just upped our solar law or, we have a pilot provision in there, and in addition, um, we're, we're extracting a recreation fee as well.
Let's go ahead, Bill.
Because our subdivision numbers are way down, our, our rec fee, uh, revenue is way down, so this is a, a matter which.
I, I think that is in the town's best interest to develop some of these lands, and if we were going to limit it, I don't think, it's only for, but all interested parties, it should be limited to maybe perhaps a certain percentage of the property.
Right.
You would limit it along those lines rather than the soil, et cetera, because I've got to think if we had these most, that all of these lands would be considered prime farmland.
I, I think it's way too restrictive. So that's, that's extremely restrictive, and, 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 you know, I get in trouble because I'm, 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 Jim, I'm, I'm, I feel that, I feel the town is, well, that's a huge opportunity with the, with the, with deeper, uh, south property, I, I think they should, uh, approve that, allow them to put that in, it's going to be, as I said to Jim, I've looked at him my whole life, the, uh, that soil element is not that good of a percentage, it sounds like up here, it's a different soil, uh, if you develop a bunch of houses down there, you're going to have settlement issues, you know, you get water issues, you've got traffic issues, you've got, and if we put a solar array in there, um, it's, it's going to generate revenue to the community, there will be nobody going to school, it won't pack traffic, it's, it's like a no, to me, it's like a no brainer.
The word of water quality issue is my, uh, my father-in-law and mother lives that far, so I can appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, to me, it's a golden opportunity, you've got high tension power lines running right there, you've got a, a very large piece of property that is set dormant for a long period of time, honestly, I, personally, this is, we don't need another huge house development to manage the traffic, I was almost going to video record with my phone, five thirty this morning, when I was in front of my house, putting my mail, went to go and get my truck to drive out, and fourteen cars went by, and then I went out with the truck, and the twenty-five cars went by, and it's like constant traffic, here's an opportunity to utilize a space that's on a main highway that really should be more than residential, and you inject revenue to the community, energy.
Also, farmers have to understand farmland, so I think you think, that's important.
We need to be looking at those kinds of things.
Using their land for something a little bit more profitable maybe than farming, we can still be able to farm.
When I, back before the road virus, when they had the meeting, and I was here with the farmers and stuff, I guess it, when I go to Rosemont, I have another twenty-two acres, you go past fire after farm, and twenty-two acres, huge, milking three hundred head a half, and in one section of their farm, there'll be a probably, I've got somewhere fifty acres of solar panels, when I drive by that, I don't find it any more unappealing than, than seeing thirty houses built there with three cars under the yard, so.
I, I didn't see where, um, I'm trying to review any, any, it says here, the one provision I found within 14999, that sets up the provisions for tier three systems, the big ones, the under C site plan review standards, item three B, in R5, in the R5, the block cover may be up to forty percent, gross area of each lot, I was, the systems are to be located, systems, components shall not be located on any designated wetland area or whatever, but I didn't see anything about limits on.
Page seven.
Prime farmland, in fact, these are not, it's on page four of the 14999 number.
Where's that, I don't know.
So on page one, Jim, and I do not have the forty percent, and, and now that I remember, that's something, perhaps they may have been said to that, just, certainly this is above my pay grade, but I think, uh.
No, it's, it's not above your pay grade, it's important.
That seemed very, again, that seemed limiting, that forty percent, I do remember seeing that, but it's one of them, it just says.
Page one.
Okay, this is shall not be constructed on prime farmland or statewide authority, yes.
There's a great long list there, perhaps you can't.
So those would be my one concern, I think that the, the plan that's up, the verbiage in here about decommissioning, and you brought that up, uh, the town board or whatever it means, that's a very important consideration, as the technology evolves, and what will that entail as far as traffic and, and any detriment to the land erosion, those types of considerations, I don't foresee that being a problem, so I think all of that is well thought out, I mean, mainly, this verbiage here is a great.
Okay, so my notes, so I, I, because I'm going to be sending these, and I'm going to copy you on the even lessons that I sent to the town board for this discussion tonight.
Yep.
My, my first three things so far are, uh, why was the building integrated solar not included in tier one?
Yep.
That's a question, and then, um, uh, restriction on prime lot, a farmland should have, or the restriction on prime farmland is too restrictive. That's a comment, correct?
Yeah.
And then, um, uh, the percentage utilization at forty percent is too low.
Anybody else, anyone else, does that?
Well, just in terms of the restriction from prime farmland, it's not just, it's not so much to me, it's not just the prime farmland, but there's a whole list of.
Exactly.
Farming types.
There's not a restriction.
That's too restrictive, that whole list is too restrictive.
There would be a whole list.
Cut down on some of it, and I said, like, it's not a percentage, only a percentage for that in each one.
What are you going to, uh, nail on there?
No, I'm soaking it all in, I've read this many, many times, uh, I have, and I'm almost more, I wanted to review, I have a family friend that's one of the biggest farmland owners in the county, and I know that he's here often, Mr. Killian, and, uh, I think he's been handcuffed, and we're kind of looking at what he's discussing here, I think he, you know, has that right, be able to reduce his land.
Well, he was at the meeting.
Yes.
And, and I had known the family for a long time, too, and.
Yeah, passed the NDCB, um, you know, about.
Well, he's trying to save the farm.
Yeah, several methods to, to generate revenue, in addition to solar, there were still a couple of things he, he was trying to achieve, uh, prior, so it's been a issue for him for a while.
Yeah, and he wants to save the farm, the family land, and I, I think that's wonderful, because I believe that we need to keep the farmland.
I think this is a way to keep, not to destroy.
Exactly.
Because I think it all depends on what they have to do. So, so beyond that, that, that seems to be the true crux of the matter, is utilization of prime farmland and the percent use of far, farmland.
And maybe one more thing is, um, and you guys can speak to this, but you brought up the whole issue of decommissioned, or as the technology evolves, would it be appropriate to put some, um, requirements that the technology needs to be upgraded?
I don't think it is, that's not the last thing, it, but that's the same.
That's a decommissioning plan.
I think the decommissioning plan, that's much that, that, if the, I think by the way it's written, that if the systems they had became that profitable and that working, a bunch of better systems, they could be non-forced to, either they're going to, because they couldn't shut it down, because if they shut it down, they got to take it out, so they had to upgrade it to keep it going.
Right, and that would really fall under the perjury of the landowner to, to make that decision.
Well, I think in most cases, it's not going to be the landlord, it's going to be, it'll be, be the provider, whoever the less.
Yeah, it'll be the solar provider, and then what I'm saying, when I.
They usually seize lands and maybe install their.
And they maintain all that equipment, and, and I believe that by the way that's written, it, and if I'm wrong, I, I probably don't shut up, but the way I read it, it seems to.
Well, I can still put that in as a comment, I mean, we, we can encourage, so as technology evolves, uh, upgrade, uh, the equipment.
Yeah.
The chief of charge is going to go at this, is, they don't.
Absolutely.
Well, perhaps.
Well, it might be, it might be a thing where, you know, and they come in with a mental cycle plan or something like that, or, you know, because it could require a different system.
Might be.
I don't know. So I have, I have those four comments, and is that represented?
I have a few.
Maybe those, something like that, can you email me those?
Uh, I could, I mean, this is, I think this is important, and.
Okay.
Talks about, talks about the prime, the last sentence, who says excess company construction site is not to be buried or left surface in active agriculture layers, I think we need to strike active agriculture layers, that should be anywhere, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, you want to, you want to make it anywhere.
Yes.
Very good one, that's interesting, he's very good about those, so, um, I'm happy to be, uh.
Has attention to detail.
He's very good with detail, yes.
And when it, when they talked about the standards for, uh, the planning standards for tier three, tier three systems, it didn't include anything about electrical diagrams or whatever, which is part of the state model, there's a whole thing about that, which I would think the plan would want.
Okay, so, um.
Do you want the diagrams for the.
As far as the site plan review.
Just letting you know, diagrams and the cross-sections, et cetera, et cetera.
Such as the.
The infrastructure. Include references from state model law.
Talking about electrical diagrams, whatever, and one last thing, I'm sorry, that's, but when it talked about ground mounted, the definition of ground mounted, it just says for non-site consumption, it should say, I would assume the ground mounted solar panels also for off-site construction, or consumption.
So what was that, Gary, I've done, say that again?
Uh, when it talks about ground. When it talks about ground mounted.
Under definitions.
Under definitions. Ground mounted. It says primary purpose of producing electricity for onsite consumption, I assume should be and or offsite.
I agree.
But yeah, with the ground, that's better, yeah.
I mean, it's actually.
Something to the grid. Well, no, I don't think as a matter of fact that you can, anything you generate onsite, then consume, it has to be put back into the grid, you get an offset credit. You don't, that's a, that's a kind of misconception then, whatever you generate from your, like your roof panel goes into your house, that doesn't happen.
Right.
It goes back into the grid and then.
I think that's just an oversight in that definition, but it's an oversight. I don't want to see it.
Nobody, you really can't, it's impossible to consume onsite.
Well, it isn't possible.
Well, yeah, I can say that.
It's very expensive.
Yeah, yeah. It's not as easy as it sounds.
Battery systems and all the controls you have put in there, it brings the cost to the whole system exorbitant.
Yeah, the state, the state model law talked about storage batteries onsite, and I didn't see that anywhere in our, for tier three, and I don't know if that's relevant, because why would you want to store it onsite?
Well, it is allowed, if it isn't, then will that be allowed? If I want to build, I'll make my house solar independent, I can do that, and it would be good.
It just has more to do with tier three.
What's implied here is tier one and tier two are to be a residential scale.
Yes.
And tier three is the large.
The large scale.
So I don't know, I don't know if this is important.
Right. Well, I've got, I've got eight comments.
I appreciate it.
If something else comes up, before, I'm going to try and get this written tomorrow and send the email off to the board. Now, I'll certainly copy you on it, but if you have something tomorrow before noon, shoot me an email.
All right.
All right, I'll be happy to include it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your talents.
I don't want to see a lot of offside and not a lot of downside.
Is that, that included discussion on the soil law?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's have a vote in that effect then, so we.
I'll remember.
Okay, Chris, we're all set, that's, that's the end of the meeting.
Thank you, man. Thank you for cheering us. Thank you, good night.
Good night, Chris, thank you.